Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for Council Bill 20-0527, ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined by Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett, 7th District, Vice President of the Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District, a member of the Committee, Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer, 5th District, Member of the Committee. We are joined by Matt Stugman and Nina Famos on behalf of Mayor Jack Young. We are joined by Dominic McIlly and Rebecca Simmons on behalf of Council President Brandon Scott. We are here today for Department of General Services. Chi Chi, please take it away.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me? Great. Thank you very much, Committee Chair Costello, for the opportunity to be here to present the budget for, on behalf of the Department of General Services. My name is Chi Chi Niaga Nash, and I am the Director of the Department. Thank you very much to all the council members who are present with us today, and I look forward to presenting our budget and answering any questions that may come forth. It's unfortunate that I don't have beside me and behind me my amazing leadership team, because then I'd be able to introduce them in person. They are all with us virtually, and I'll just, I just want to acknowledge them and introduce them virtually. On our leadership team is Eric Schuler, who is the Deputy Director, Ben Brosch, our CFO, Bambi Stevens, who has been a mainstay with DGS for many years, so I'm sure you're all very familiar with her, is our Chief of Capital Projects and Energy. Catherine Burns is our Chief of HR. Terrell Chesson is Deputy Chief for the Facilities Management Division. Chris Lyons, who is our newest member, recently joined us as the Division Chief for Fleet Management. Babala Lima is Manager of our Business Process Improvement Office. Kayjesta Campbell is Head of our IT Department. John Kirk, a recent acquisition from the Department of Public Works, is our new Organizational Change Manager. Brian LaSalle is our Communications Manager, and I just want to also highlight Aleah Hendricks, who is the only one here present with me. She's our Operations Manager and serves as our Equity Coordinator and Government Relations. Before I get into, actually, sorry, next slide. I should have done that introduction while we had the org chart up. But before we get to the next slide, which is where we're going to go into each service and highlight some of the budget items and the impact that they've had or that has been had on them. I just want to highlight some of our successes, because we don't often get the chance to be in front of council able to share successes and wins. So I just want to highlight a few things that DGS has been able to accomplish in the last year or so. One is, and I know this budget doesn't talk about capital, but it is important to note the work that Bambi Stevens and her team does. And so just a few highlights of what they've completed in the last year. We have undertaken the renovations of the Waverly and Hampden Libraries, and those are almost complete. The Health Department got a new health clinic at 1200 East Fayette. And I have to say, that was extremely timely, given the enormity of their responsibilities in response to the pandemic. And a rather cool and obscure one that most people wouldn't recognize as something that we're responsible for, but is the Shot Tower. So at the end of that project, we will be able to have tours up to the top of the Shot Tower and be able to tell people about its significance and its history. In order to increase our focus on recruitment of particularly youth, but youth who have chosen to pursue a career in the trades and in the automotive industry, we hired a Recruitment Generalist so that we would be able to capitalize on the work that's already been done to establish relationships with schools such as Mervo and Westside Edmondson, and be able to expand that out to other trade schools and technical schools so that we're able to compete stronger with the private sector who are reaching out to these youth younger and younger and recruiting them into their ranks before they've even graduated. We have, so one of the acquisitions of the department this year was the movement of the Energy Office from the Department of Public Works to DGS. And with that service moving over, we've been able to tie in two very important services, which is capital and energy, and understanding that they are, they're just natural synergies with having those two entities exist in the same place. Between the capital, I mean, the Energy Group, BPIO, fiscal, facilities management, there's been a very concerted effort to wrap our arms around the utilities that the city pays, particularly in DGS buildings, and we now want to expand that out to understanding utilities paid for all city buildings. It was a heavy project, a data capture project, where we had to work with Veolia and Department of Public Works and BGE to consolidate all the utility information that is out there in order to be able to better get an understanding of how we can budget for utilities in our buildings and to be able to forecast what those expenses are going to be. And by further integrating the Energy Office, we can now use those analyses to determine where we should be pursuing projects that would have a larger impact on energy savings and cost reductions. With the Fleet Department, what I would want to highlight most is the success of the Gain Sharing Program. And that is a program that was instituted about two, three years ago, which is, it empowers the employees to make recommendations for changes to the operation that ultimately result in avoidance of costs. I'm not going to say cost savings, but avoiding costs that we had projected, had anticipated would have been incurred. Because of their direct, when employees are empowered and authorized and given the space to make recommendations to changing the things that they do, the work they do, they know it best. They're the ones doing it day in, day out. And just knowing that their recommendations or suggestions are being heard and in many times implemented, we have seen huge turnaround in the, we've seen a lot of reduction of costs. And it's not just costs. I think, let me give an example of something that happened in the past few weeks. So in our attempt to respond to COVID, Fleet has been abundantly aware that we need to do something different with the way we intake vehicles, how we're sanitizing them to make sure that our employees are safe as they work on them, and then on the back end, make sure that they're clean as we return them to our customer agencies. For the last three months, we've been cleaning them in a very time-consuming manner. But because of the culture that's been created there at Fleet with employees being heard and encouraged to suggest different ways of performing, we now have a much faster process because two or three employees came together, did a large amount of research on different high-pressure sprayers that we could be using, different chemicals that we could be spraying that dry faster. And because of that, our turnaround time of getting the vehicles back out to the agencies has increased, and we can be assured that those vehicles are fully sanitized before we send them back out. If I may for a moment, just go back to the highlight about recruitment and our concerted effort to reach out to the youth who have chosen to pursue the trades. Another way in which we have made great strides in essentially marketing, not just the city of Baltimore, but marketing local government as a competitive, as an interesting, as a very rewarding place to work has been through the BPIO Office's Extension Program. And with that, we've formed academic partnerships with local and regional universities to the point where we are, we've embedded ourselves in a lot of their programs. So we engage the students, we engage the seniors and graduate students in their capstone projects, and we present them with data sets or we present them with problem statements of issues that we are encountering in DGS, and together we solve them. We use their most current technology and just young, fresh brain power to be able to solve the problems that we are facing. And at the same time, we use it to help paint a picture for what city government can be and should be, and that it can be an exciting place to work. And so I just want to commend the group that has put together that Extension Program, and we are seeing more and more higher ed institutions reaching out to partner with us. And with that, I would ask that we move on to the next slide, and I will, as we go through each service, I'll talk a little bit about what we have done during this pandemic. So Fleet Management is responsible for the purchase, maintenance, fueling, and then ultimately the surplusing of the city's fleet of vehicles. Those vehicles are used by all the city agencies. So as illustrated there in that service description summary, it's everything that's used by law enforcement. It's solid wastes load packers. It is the white sedans that are used by parking enforcement. In, when requested to make cuts first, it was in finding the reductions in our budget. We had to think very creatively because a lot of Fleet Management, actually, all of Fleet Management is on Internal Service Fund, and the majority of the expenses in it are employee-related. So finding cuts would be difficult without reduction in workforce. So we had to be very creative. And one of the ways that we were able to do that is in revising the debt payment schedule for the city's master lease. The master lease is the vehicle by which we are able to go out to market and secure funding, financing for the annual procurement of vehicles. And by restructuring the payment schedule, we were able to reduce $1.7 million from the obligation of the other agencies in paying back the debt service for the vehicles that have been purchased for them. We don't anticipate, however, that this reduction is going to increase the city's debt in any way, just a restructuring, not an increase to the debt overall. Next slide, please. Within our Administration Service, we have the Human Resources, IT, Data Management, Business Process, Change Management, and Communications. And that, it's difficult to explain or it's difficult to quantify the impact that the Administrative, the Administration Division has outside of DGS. So they're well-hidden. They are often in the background, but the work that they do has such a vast impact outside of the agency. And so I'll just give a quick example. At the beginning of COVID, as we started trying to figure out within DGS how we needed to restructure the way in which we were procuring our essential supplies, we partnered, ended up partnering with the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management and the Office of Performance and Innovation, and were instrumental in the creation of the SOP, the protocols that have been set up for a centralized warehouse within the Fire Department for the city's entire inventory of COVID-related materials. So that is just yet another way in which while we are not always on the forefront, we are always in, we assist agencies in many ways than what you just see on paper in the description of the service. Next slide, please. As I stated, the Energy Performance Office was a recent addition to DGS's portfolio. The, I don't think I need to say much more there, just to highlight though that there has been, just in the few months that the office has been with the agency, which was back in November, there has been a great deal of work done in trying to get a better idea, get a better sense of exactly where we are as a city in our energy consumption. And having that better understanding makes us, gives us the ability to be more, to have a higher negotiating ability at the table when we are negotiating with the power purchase agreements and the Brickback, which is a consortium through which we purchase our energy from the wholesaler. So without a base understanding of what it is we're spending our energy on, where we have the ability to shift to more renewable energies, we can't fully articulate our position as a city in those consortiums. So that has been a very heavy lift. Additionally, we have, by leaning on resources outside of just the Energy Office, we've made a concerted effort to increase the number of grants that we are writing. So we've already seen, we've already had success in receiving a grant for $50,000 to assist us in the procurement of energy-efficient vehicles and for electric vehicles. And we were recently awarded $685,000 to complete a project at, hmm, not Back River, at one of the water treatment plants to install LED fixtures. So that's yet another win for us in the past year. Next slide, please. Facilities Management, we're responsible for hundreds of city buildings. Within our Internal Service Fund, we have 45 buildings that we essentially own and manage and are responsible for every aspect of them. For those, we charge the tenants that are occupying space rent. It's charged on a per-square-foot basis. And tying back to the energy project that was the analysis of our utilities, the ability to fully charge rent in those spaces, one of the components of that is utilities. So our having a better understanding of exactly how much energy is being spent in those spaces, whether they're occupied by city agencies or nonprofits or other governmental entities, helps us more reliably calculate the rental rates for those entities. With Facilities Management, I just want to say I'm extremely proud of the way that they've been able to not pivot, because they haven't pivoted away from anything, but to take on the additional responsibilities that have come about with COVID and be a leading force, a voice of subject matter expertise and guidance to all the other agencies that have buildings in informing them on what changes we need to make to make our spaces safer as we consider the restoration of services, as in later phases, as we start considering letting the public back into our buildings and workspaces. The Facilities Management Group has just been absolutely phenomenal in researching, in reaching out to other entities to find out what are best practices to ensure that, so that we can, with a sense of confidence, say that to all our customer agencies, to all the occupants of the buildings, that we have done everything that we have the ability to do to make sure that the spaces you are working in, the spaces you are coming back into are safe and secure. Next slide, please. So I started off talking about DGS successes with a few of the recent projects that the Capital Projects and Energy Division have completed. So I don't believe I have much more to add on this slide. Next slide, please. And that is the end of the presentation of our services, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Chi Chi. We're going to start with Council Vice President Middleton.
Good morning. I guess my, I think it's more of comments with me. At first, and a lot of people don't know this, but I served as an administrator in the General Services Office of Department of Labor Licensing and Regulations for the state for a while. So I can definitely understand processes of the Department of General Services. And my hat off to you for being a female woman in charge of this predominantly male-dominated office, in a sense, especially in management position. So I can relate with some of the challenges that you have. And a very strong woman, and I appreciate that and appreciate your service and what you do for that agency. I guess the second thing, you had mentioned your auto program and how that's progressing. And just want to let you know, and you probably already know that Forest Park High School is a fairly new career in technology school, 21st century school, and they do have an auto program that is really trying to connect and build partnerships. And I welcome that outreach there.
And if I may, on that, my apologies. When I mentioned Edmondson and Mervo, I did forget to mention Forest Park. We do have work-study students from there. So they are a part of our work-study program, yes.
Oh, great, great. I know that they have some challenges in getting, I guess, automobiles donated to do their work and studying with. I don't know how you can help with that. I know that the Alumni Association is very much involved and want that program to really succeed. And I can connect you with the President of the Alumni Association as well to kind of help move that along. And I know that you do a lot of outreach, because you do job fairs around the city. And I know there was one prepared, again, before the COVID, at C.C. Jackson. So please continue to do those things around the city. There are lots of youth in the city that are very much interested in having, going to auto mechanics as a career and starting their own businesses. And I think that's a great start. And just happy to hear that Fleet, you shared, you know, the story of how you change the way you're cleaning. And it's just great, that's a good story that we're hearing, especially with COVID happening, and you just getting some positive feedback and experiences on working to do what you do differently. So again, I don't have any specific questions. I just know that you have, your office has always been very responsive and with, you know, the council, at least with my office. And I appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman.
I'm done.
Thank you. Vice Chair Pinkett.
No questions at this time.
Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have a question. You talked about some of the buildings that we own. I'm wondering if we've ever looked into solar panels, if that's even an option for us to bring down some of our bills. And I'm also curious, in reference to some of the cars, the units that we have, are there more energy-efficient options that we could use in our fleet of cars? We're talking about the environment and everything else. I'm wondering if we will ever ship to environmentally-friendly vehicles.
I'll answer the first, I mean, the second question first about the vehicles. And then I will queue up Julia Kalos, who's our Deputy Chief of the Energy Office, to answer the question about the history of our attempts as a city to install solar panels and the existence of some solar panels at one or two facilities. In regard to energy-efficient vehicles, yes, we are very much trying to make them more mainstream, which was part of the reason for seeking out the grant to assist us in the procurement of those vehicles. So the $50,000 will be helping us with the purchase of 19 electric vehicles. I'm not saying that 19 electric vehicles cost $50,000, but the grant is to assist, to close the gap in what would be the cost of a non-EV versus an EV to eliminate the angst of spending additional money upfront on an electric vehicle, even though we know that over the life of the vehicle, the costs do, the costs of maintaining an electric vehicle are cheaper than maintaining a combustion engine vehicle. So that's what the grant is for. We are, however, cognizant of the fact that we cannot rush to procuring the vehicles before we, as a city and our agencies, are ready infrastructurally with the ability to charge those vehicles. And so we participate in conversations with the Department of Transportation and a working group that is currently, and I think it's BGE, but a working group that's looking at where in the city the installation of charging stations makes sense. So because it would be putting the cart before the horse if we were to flood our fleet with these vehicles without the ability to make sure that they can be charged and that agencies understand the slight differences in the operation of the vehicles. As for the use of solar power, I will pass it over to Julia.
Hi, thank you very much for that question. Currently, the city has one megawatt of solar PV plant out at Back River, produces approximately 1 million kilowatt-hours per year. We also, I apologize, can you hear me on my headset? Okay, great. We also purchase about 12 million kilowatt-hours a year from a 10-megawatt solar plant out in Hartford County. It would be a solar power purchase agreement, which allows us to get the solar power more cost-effectively than doing small installations on top of buildings. I think as we move forward, I think our office is looking, wherever there is an opportunity to invest in solar panels on buildings, we want to make sure that is an open option.
Thank you.
Councilman Schleifer.
I just want to say, Chi Chi, you're doing an excellent job, and I appreciate your responsiveness and your steadfast responsiveness to anything that's asked of them and any follow-up that's necessary. Most people don't realize that you guys are one of the backbones that keep the city running. And so I've been down to your plants and your operations multiple times, as you know. And it's just very impressive to see how efficiently you guys operate and just what a great job you do all around to keep all of our operations running. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all of DGS. I echo Councilman Schleifer's sentiments in terms of, we appreciate the work that you do. I wanted to follow up a little bit on Councilwoman Snead's question and just catch, I think, the end of Julia's response about what planning we do to make certain that we can add solar panels to the roofs of city-owned buildings. I went through a whole thing with the school system a couple of years ago. I went through a whole thing with the school system a couple of years ago, where they were complaining that they couldn't put solar panels on most of their roofs because the roofs weren't designed to hold them. And it was harder than I thought it would have been to get a commitment from the school system that when they're doing roof work, that they would make a point of proactively repairing roofs so that they could hold solar panels. And what I'm, guess I'm looking for is, is that something we're already doing at the city level, where we don't just have it, it's not just a question of being aware that it's an option, but are we proactively planning to put solar panels on roofs as we do whatever normal maintenance and upkeep we need to be doing to the roofs of city properties?
So Julia, before you respond to that, I just want to point out that, Councilman Henry, you have absolutely hit the nail on the head with the need for joint conversations between a capital project group and an energy group, so that there is not work that is done, and unfortunately, this, so that there is not work done on a building, and an entire capital-
I appreciate your effort to be tactful.
And an entire capital project started and completed, and then an energy project starting behind it, that, where you find out that there's, it's not compatible, or that there ought to have been different engineering done that would have better prepared the facility for the energy component. And so even as Julia answers that, I would also like to invite Bambi Stevens from the capital group, if she wishes to weigh in on that exact point, and how we have fought through it in the past, and what our plans for the future might be.
Hi, this is Bambi Stevens, so I guess I'll go first. So one of the reasons that DGS pushed to basically move the energy group back under DGS, as opposed to leaving it in DPW where it had lived for, I believe, the last five or six years, was so that we could have this dialogue, because we were finding that inherent in kind of the capital, the DGS capital project world, is we weren't able to understand what was happening on the DPW side of the shop, and therefore on sort of on the energy side of the shop. So we pulled energy back within DGS, it's a complement to the capital projects group, and the intention is that as we move through capital planning and projects on DGS buildings, we will be inviting the Energy Department or the Energy Section to weigh in and really have a seat at the table to have a discussion about how we implement and incorporate energy conservation measures, or anything else really that would be along that line of thinking into the projects that we do moving forward. Having said that, there is, Councilman Henry, and by the way, congratulations-
Thank you.
Is a move, a distinction between a repair of a roof, for instance, and an actual roof replacement? So on the capital side, we are looking at, when we replace a roof, yes, that's the time to talk about the structural integrity of the roof and the incorporation of that additional weight. If it's really just a repair in the sense of, we're putting the same thing back because of a cost perspective, then it's a different discussion to have. So we focus our budget as far as what we are able to do in those scenarios.
But that's actually, you touch on a great point, which is, when the decision is being made to do a repair rather than a replacement, is one of the cost factors that's being brought into play there, the long-term energy savings of being able to add solar panels?
Yes. It is now integrated in that discussion. Fortunately, it's a lot cheaper to do a high-level repair versus a replacement that requires structural, and then the panels themselves. So sometimes there is the, you know, we have to look at the current condition of the building, and do we need to just get it fixed because it's actively leaking? So that's, it's all coming. And the one thing I did want to mention, and Julia can probably touch on this a little more if she chooses to, is she's now, or the Energy Section is now actively discussing the installation of a solar field out at Reedburg Park. We've recently, and it's interesting because we, I learned from someone else that Wreckin' Parks is putting a ball field out there. So just last week, we're thinking, okay, we need to get this conversation, we need to get the parties together so that they haven't built a ball field where we want to put our solar field. So we're working on that, and that would be funded through, I don't remember if it's grant money, and Julia can comment on that, but looking at, you know, part of what DGS Capital wants to do is look at these significant sources of grant money that are out there for energy-related measures, and figure out how to have that dialogue, because of course the timing is always different. There's the capital funding component, and then there's the grant component, and you got to make sure that you're marrying those as well, so that we can take advantage of both our capital funding and our energy grant money. We want to maximize the dollar, we want to figure out the best way to handle the money for the project is, and so that's the overarching goal. We did, as far as the 1200 East Fayette Eastern Health Clinic, I'm not sure it's called Eastern anymore, but one of the components of that was, was DGS Capital did the entire building renovation, the skin and the interior of the building, and Energy put in the HVAC, new HVAC units in that building through an ESCO contract. So it really is, you know, that was an example of what should happen and what our goal is. Unfortunately, there was a little disconnect because Energy was still in DPW, and the dialogue wasn't as smooth as we would have liked, but it showed this is the potential, and this is what we can be. These are the conversations that we can be having, looking at different sources of funding, and figuring out really, again, how to maximize the money that the city gets so that we get the best value for our dollar, along with that consideration of energy, the energy component of any of our projects.
So do you have a master list of all city buildings, and when you expect the existing useful lifespan of their roofs to require?
Councilman-
Capital works with the DGS administrative group to, yes, come up with that sort of, you know, I would call it a master list. We have an idea of what the life cycle is of each of our buildings. Now, there's a lot of other components that then get laid into when capital work gets done, but we each year have a general idea of what kind of the next item on the list is. And then with energy coming in, unfortunately, sort of mid, you know, toward the end of our budget preparation last year, they will be fully incorporated this coming year to talk about what kind of funding they may have coming in the pipeline, and then what the projects are that we do. And, you know, unfortunately, this is my plug for more money for DGS Capital, we don't have enough money to do what we need to do in all of our buildings. So again, it is a very delicate dance that we do between getting the work that absolutely has to be done, done, because it's critical to the continued operation of the building, and then getting the work that incorporates these other factors and these other possibilities. I will say that when we're looking at our capital, kind of preparing our budget, one of the factors we look at is the ability to pull funding from other sources. So whether it be private funds, or state funds, or grant funds, that goes into the mix in terms of how we prioritize what we're going to request in terms of our capital budget, because we request on the basis of specific projects. We don't just get a big pot of money that we can spend however we want, we have to articulate what those individual projects are, and then it goes through the budget approval process, and ultimately, certain things are funded, certain things that we ask for are funded, and certain things are not.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Committee members, we're now chair of the meeting.
Does anybody have any other questions from the committee? All right, then I guess we are in recess then, that there's no further questions. Thank you. Thank you very much. Bye. Thank you.
In recess until 11:00 a.m., and then we will hear from the Planning Commission. Thank you.